So, good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to our public meeting to discuss legislative matters. This time, I'd like to ask for a motion to reconvene.
I make a motion to reconvene the Board of County Commissioners' meeting.
Second.
Have motion in a second to reconvene the Coward County Commissioners' meeting. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. So, good evening, everybody. I want to welcome our delegation here tonight. Thank you, Senator Jackson, Senator Bailey, and Delegate Morgan.
Thank you.
Appreciate coming out.
Pleasure being here with you all.
Thank you. Mr. Norris, County Attorney, you want to kick things off?
Thank you, Sir. John Norris, County Attorney. And before we get started, Mr. President, you instructed that we will have public comment tonight. So after the presentation, we will use the rules for public comment that apply during the 10 o'clock meeting and invite the public to speak. So, I've already introduced myself. The commissioner of form of government is the oldest one in the state of Maryland. It is one that only has the powers that the General Assembly decides to provide it and approved by the governor. So this evening, we have a total of 10 requests that were reviewed earlier. There are eight that I believe have been approved to move forward, so we'll go through those. For the benefit of the senators and delegation, ask any questions. We try to have the folks here who have requested the legislation here to answer any questions. The first relates to the change of name for Calvert Memorial. The name was changed to Calvert Health. Through the public local laws, the county commissioners are authorized to provide Calvert Memorial today funding. There's not a current funding request, but this was my initiative at the request of a couple of members of their board of directors that we just update the legislation to reflect the name change. So it would simply replace Calvert Memorial with Calvert Health Medical Center.
Your corporate name.
Second request was not supported by the Board of County Commissioners. It would have imposed a transfer tax on instruments of writing recorded in land records or recorded with the State Department of Assessments and Taxation based on the consideration paid. Request number three is for an asset management contract that came to us from the Department of Public Works. The Department of Public Works specifically, I believe this was in the context of a water tower, wanted to have the ability to have long-term, 20-year contracts with the company that would be managing the assets on their behalf. For water towers, it's particularly important that the epoxies that are used to maintain the integrity of the tank and protect the water from the corrosion, from corroding the steel are compatible. So the 20-year, this is a request for the ability to have an initial term of not less than 20 years for long-term asset management. So it would be another exception to the one-year renewable four times.
Do you have multiple owners of water towers?
I believe there is one private water company down in the outskirts of Chesapeake Ranch Estates that may have a water tower. Fortunately, our Director of Public Works is here to correct me if I'm wrong. But the remainder of the water tower is in the county, but not in the municipalities or county entity.
Good evening, Jerrica Cosgrove, Director of Public Works. So there's, I guess you could say there's two private water systems that have tanks slash towers. So this would cover not only the elevated towers, but what we call like the hydro pneumatic tanks that are made through ground level. They're similar to the tanks like in your house with a bladder system. So it would cover those. It would also cover, like our water meter system, if we start looking into advanced meter infrastructure system where more has, has like radio frequency, similar to the radios that our public safety uses. So we consider the same contract for our meter system, so you can be monitoring from, basically from our office instead of having to drive around and read the meter. So that's the point of this, this request, is to cover contracts similar to those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the benefit of Delegate Fisher, who has joined us. Request number one was to change the name of Calvert Memorial Hospital to Calvert Health Medical Center. In the existing public local laws that allow the county commissioners to provide funding is not subject, is not because there's any funding request. It's just to update the name, corporate name. Item number two was a request for a transfer tax on written instruments. The commissioners voted earlier today not to support that, so that's going to be withdrawn.
Thank you.
Request number four. So there is existing legislation that allows the counties to provide a tax credit or a tax exemption for barns that are currently used solely for tobacco. There is also legislation that exists for Charles and St. Mary's Counties for barns that were formerly used to house tobacco. This request is to extend the legislation that exists for Charles and St. Mary's County to Calvert County, so the commissioners would have the ability to provide a property tax credit against the tax imposed on the land and the building that was formerly used for tobacco.
By land, you mean the entire farm or just the area that the barn construes?
It typically is considered the curtilage, so it's the land on which the tobacco buyout agreement might have been subject to. It would not typically include the residential units with an acre or two surrounding them.
Thank you.
Because not everyone took the buyout and could be eligible for this.
So the tax credit, a tax credit is when you give someone a check. So this is a tax credit for tobacco barns that were once used for tobacco, but not currently? Okay.
Correct.
And it's, its purpose is to incentivize people when they buy farms in Calvert County or buy property that has a, that has a tobacco barn to not knock it down?
Because they wouldn't be penalized for, for having it by the recent property tax.
For the record, my, won't call them out, but my neighbor, wonderful person, they, they knocked theirs down and then burned it, which I, I just couldn't believe. So I, I think this is a good proposal.
Now, barns that might be converted to residential units would not qualify for this. The way the legislation is drafted today for Charles and St. Mary's County, it has to be used for something that the department recognizes as an agricultural use. So converting it to storage for tractors might be okay, but converting it to residential uses would not enable them to take advantage of this tax credit.
What about commercial, like ag tourism?
That is a question of interpretation. If it is recognized as agricultural tourism and not a pure commercial use, I believe that it would still qualify. But if it's bringing products in from overseas for sale, and that's their primary business model, likely would not qualify.
I mean, let's say would be used as a wedding venue.
It could. Without having the authorization, we don't necessarily get into the detail level of what's going to qualify. But first, request the enabling legislation.
And John, correct me if I'm wrong, but his stipulation was once a tobacco barn. So if that tobacco barn was turned into a wedding venue, then yes.
Thank you.
As well as, I'm not sure if my mic's on, but as well as possibly a winery where they're using from the vineyard on their property.
So with the enabling legislation, we certainly could get public feedback on what percentage of grapes have to come from that property, for instance.
John, any clarification as to if a tobacco barn that was once legit tobacco barn, it's kind of obvious, but that someone relocates onto their property because the person that had it didn't want it?
So long as the land on which it's located is still for an agricultural purpose, then likely yes, would qualify. Request number five. Request number five has a couple of different parts to it. One of the most important parts is Section Two of the draft legislation says that the, when it is effective, the county must reduce its collected property tax rate by an amount equal to the emergency services tax. And part number three is that it wouldn't be effective until October 1 of 2025, so that it could not be put in place. It would be haphazard to, to not think this out further and, and make it effective for calendar year 2026. But the purpose of this is to have an emergency services tax that is a dedicated funding stream for support service organizations and the volunteer fire and rescue associations. For the volunteer fire and rescue associations, their tax revenue would be that generated from their first due response area. So each of the volunteer companies has a first due response area. The money that's generated off the real property tax rate that is voted in annually by the Board of County Commissioners would be allocated to them, for them to then form a budget to go to the Fire and Rescue Commission and present that budget to the Board of County Commissioners annually along with their audited financials. Other organizations that get a derivative, a piece of that tax revenue, include the countywide services. So you've got Calvert Advanced Life, its first due area is the entire county. Calvert Dive Team's first due area is all of Calvert County. There are programs that benefit the volunteer organizations and their membership that include the length of service awards program, the recruitment and retention programs that the volunteers create, and the property tax incentive program for volunteers. There could be a portion of the tax allocated for the career EMS services that are supporting the volunteers when they're not able to make a response because their volunteers may be working or unable, unable to get to the call. So this would be authorizing a cap of 22 cents per hundred on the real property tax rate. And I believe it's 10 cents per hundred on the personal property tax rate in Calvert County. The discussions have included, forming this request, the discussions have included the Department of Public Safety as well as the leadership of the Chief's Council and
Association.
Association. And looking at what the first year revenue stream might look like to give, to make them whole, would be about 18 cents off the real property tax rate. So the county property tax rate would drop by 18 cents, and there would be a line on their tax bill that shows the emergency services tax of 18 cents. And that would generate the revenue for all of the intended users that exist today. Similar to St. Mary's County's current program, but not their old program where each district set, could set a different rate.
John, if you lump sum the, all of those different services into one category as public safety, what would the dollar amount be that they need, that they, that they are requesting?
So it's about 1.4, using 2023 assessments, it's about 1.4 million dollars per penny. So if I get my calculator out, I believe it was around 3 million per volunteer organization, three and change. And it, and it fluctuates a little bit.
But I mean, their annual request is 3 million per volunteer.
So this would replace them having to come to the county commissioners for an apparatus grant. They would be funding their own equipment. They would be funding their own buildings, their own programs, and not coming to the county for additional funds unless, unless they needed, didn't have a reserve fund and they needed a loan.
But it would be subject to fluctuation each year depending upon which squad would like to do and come to the commissioner with their individual requests like St. Mary's.
Correct.
So my, so my simple public request to the county commissioners would be, and I know that they're working on this to be fair, is in the event that a data center or centers come to Calvert County, it's pretty clear those data centers are going to need additional public safety security that they may or may not lean on Calvert County for. And they're certainly going to need potentially more apparatus for the fire departments in case if one of those places catches on fire. Given the foregoing, I would strongly suggest tying a pilot agreement to funding this particular thing instead of going to the taxpayers. This, that way, someone else pays it, not the taxpayers. I know that this is a creative way, and it's always easier said than done, but the time to do it obviously is during that, that conversation and that particular, that particular communication and negotiation. And I, and I would just add that I know other counties do this. By do this, I mean the so-called public safety tax. But Calvert County is different. What's different about us is we have these facilities that are these electric generation facilities, very U D. By the way, no one else wants them. We have them. And I think this session, there's going to be a lot of bills for nuclear power, for modernization, which is really going to help us, for modern nukes. And because of that, I think we kind of, we're unique because we're the category killer for utilities and for AI and for data centers, because data centers absolutely have to be co-located with this power generation. This is right in my, this is right in my, this is right in my alley. So I would, my, my only suggestion is, and I'm sure you're already doing it to the county commissioners, is just have a really, really smart consultant that negotiates this for you and give that person the marching orders that you want to fund all these services. Just an idea.
Did I miss anything on that?
No, I don't think so, but we've worked really hard with our volunteers, working through this.
Understood.
And for us, it's more about, and for them, it's more about a guaranteed stream of funding, takes the politics out of it. They're screaming for things that we can't afford to give them, kind of takes that process away, and so they can do what they need to do, and we don't have, we don't, we don't have the ability to tinker. Because they're very important to us, you know, our volunteers are very important to us. They save us a lot of money. They provide a valuable service. So we just think it's, it's in both of our best interests to make sure that we could secure that service.
I mean, you'll get no argument out of me that they're important and that they save the taxpayers a fortune. There's no doubt about that.
And it was interesting, you know, we looked at different resources and funding and trying to figure out how to divide it up. And so at first, we looked at districts and some formula to redistribute the money, and that didn't work out. And they suggested we look at first dues, and I thought, well, that'll never work. But we looked at first dues, and it came out, the funding, you know, the department that's going to get the most funding runs the most calls. And it was very interesting, as John said, I think the high is, one department get 3.2 million, and the low is like 2.6. So they're all pretty close together, and it was interesting to see the tax revenues by first due districts. One was a little surprising, to be honest. But they're all on board, you know, we're still working through, as John said, working through the details, some process issues. But I think we figured out the funding part, and I think St. Mary's is 16 cents.
It varies by district.
Yeah, somewhere around 16 cents maybe as an average. So as you say, we're different. We're a little smaller than they are. So right now, I think we've settled on 18. We'll see how that works out. But we think it's in the best interest of both parties.
And for the purposes of future planning, we did ask for a cap of 22 cents, just so there's some room there.
Could, if I could just, how was the commissioner's vote on this issue?
It was unanimous, if I recall correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Now, just to add, for what it's worth, Loudoun County is the king of data centers. I'm sure they can provide a wealth of information to Calvert County, because Calvert County is about to become the king of data centers as well, so.
I don't know if we're going to be the king.
I know it's easy for me to say that, and I know that a deal's never done until it's done, but I mean, this is, you know, this is a good thing for the taxpayers.
We don't want to be Loudoun County. 225 data centers. But a billion dollars a year in tax revenue, just from data centers.
We only have two power plants, so I'm pretty sure that that's, yeah.
Next request pertains to typically foreclosed properties or rental properties where they advertise and sell tickets online for events in residential neighborhoods. Our tools that exist today to address these nuisance properties are all effective after the party has begun or after the event is over. The comptroller's office has the ability to come in and look at the sale of liquor and alcohol. The health department can look at sanitation, zoning enforcement can come in after the fact and say, you're a commercial enterprise and didn't get the proper permits. The state's attorney's office has been instrumental in going after some of these properties for being a nuisance house. We're asking for some legislation without having drafted it. We're asking for your support in finding some legislation that would allow the county to seek an injunction before the court so that the parties have the opportunity to argue that it's not going to be an inconvenience for the neighborhood. And this one was, was more discussed today by the Board of County Commissioners about how they want to make sure that it's not the wedding venue, it's not the graduation party or the 100th birthday party, but these are events where tickets are sold. Commissioner, speak further on this if you wish.
So we've had a few issues recently where, and you know, you've heard the stories, where somebody has a big house, they have a party, they sell tickets. Last year in Charles County, they had a significant issue. Ours have not got to that level yet, but we're trying to cut that off and be proactive. As I said, we have had a few cases, so we're just trying to find a fine line. And as John said, today, we discussed about where that line is, because we didn't want to put in legislation where somebody's having a wedding in their backyard, or as he says, a graduation party or an event. We didn't want to impact that, but we're trying to get at is those parties where they charge an entrance fee. Or if you buy this, it gets you an entrance into the party. So we've got to figure out the, the line of where this comes into play. So that's, that's our intention here, and the legislation's just to seek some authority to vet out those issues.
And I might add that these parties are very orchestrated and they're quite large. They bring commuter buses into the neighborhoods. They advertise with women in bikinis. They sell tickets. It, it goes on all night and disrupts residential neighborhoods, but it's very organized. And like Commissioner Hans said, we, we talked about many options today, but feel we need your help to help us come up with something that's going to shut it down and get it out of Calvert.
And these aren't one-time, these are recurring events where we're getting complaints on them, and we just need a tool to be able to address them.
I've received emails, so about these things, so.
We're fortunate, too, that the sheriff's office is very involved in these, and they moved the mobile command center to key locations that might help prevent some chaos that could otherwise ensue. Cloud computing pilot authority. So as we all learned, I learned it more painfully than others perhaps, when you do not have a pilot agreement, the personal property of a utility goes 100% towards your county wealth formula for education funding. Personal property of businesses such as a data center, 40% of that value goes towards your wealth as a county. But when that personal property is subject to a pilot or a payment in lieu of taxes, it does not count towards your county's wealth formula. There is some stability as the assets depreciate over however many years. I presume most of the AI computing is going to be over three years before it's replaced, and just the storage is typically five years before it's replaced. Pilot agreement allows both the county and the owner of the personal property to even out that ebb and flow and reach agreement on a level of funding or some incremental funding that would be advantageous to both. We don't have the authority today to have a payment in lieu of tax agreement for a cloud computing or data center, so that is this request.
So this would be over and above whatever pilots you've agreed to now or in the future, just for the plans specifically? If you add a data center, there'll be another pilot on top of the payments they're already making?
Correct. It would, it would be a different obligor, but, obligi, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because as we learned a very hard lesson this year, pilots are very important to stability in your revenue source. And as you all know, these data centers are very rich revenue sources. And so what we're trying to do is protect as much of that as we can and not give the state 40% of the tax revenue that it's going to generate. And, you know, it gives us stability, gives the provider stability. Once you sign that pilot, they know. Because the equipment in those data centers, what we've learned is the first year depreciates 50%. Then it depreciates 10% every year after until it's replaced, then it goes right back up to 100%. So there are wild fluctuations in the personal property tax. And if we do get a data center, what we'd like to do is sort of level out that funding. So for us, it's much easier budgeting. You don't want to see a large revenue stream drop by 50% in a year. So there's a lot of advantages to a pilot. So it's not about giving away tax credits. It's about stability for us and protecting as much of our revenue as we can.
Consistency.
The next request would have imposed a, a tax or a fee on telecommunications devices, mobile telecommunications devices. It was not supported, so it's been withdrawn. There was a request from the public. Ms. Hooker is here with us tonight. This request was threefold. It is to change how the county commissioners are elected, such that the Board of County Commissioners would have three members, each elected just by the district from which they are, for which they are running and which they're resident. Two would be at-large. The second part of that request is that their terms would be staggered, much like the Board of Education's terms are staggered. So there would be three that would come up for election in year one, and two that come up for election in year three. So every four years, there would be an election for at least two county commissioners. And the third part of this request is that no one person could serve more than two consecutive terms, regardless of whether it was from an at-large or from a district seat. If I captured the commissioner's sentiment on this request today, they do support what the voters of Calvert County would like to see. So if this could be presented by referendum for the voters to, to weigh in on, there would be no objection. there would be no objection, at least parts of it, I'll let the board speak for yourself.
So, and we can speak individually, but personally for me, I don't have any issue with any of the items up there on the list. But for me, it's having the state legislature determine how we elect our commissioners. I think it's up, should be up to the voters in Calvert County. And if we can find a pathway, if there are enough citizens that want to see a change and we do a referendum and they want to make a change, I'm fine. I just don't like the state legislature determining how we vote. And that's what would happen if we introduce a bill. As you all know, we just have the five of you and there are over two hundred other legislators up there and just concerned about who's making the decision for us. I'll just speak a little quick.
I agree with this statement.
Who's driving the change? Who's driving this, this particular request?
This request came from Ms. J.C. Hooker.
From the League of Women Voters.
Not on behalf of the League, but in her individual capacity and I believe she's here if she had.
Good evening, I'm J.C. Hooker. The reason that I had made this request was that, number one, being a military brat, being a military wife, and also coming from a adjoining county, and then there are other counties that we follow, if you are in a district, you only do that one district, voting for your district person. And so that's, we do that by state, we do it by federal. Yes, I am a member of the League of Women Voters and that's one of our biggest concerns is that people say, well, what district am I from? And it's hard for them to comprehend the difference and the fact when they look on their ballot, why am I voting for District Two and Three? I don't live there. I mean, we are very progressive here with our voting system. And I'm not asking you at this particular point to change it because, really being honest, all of you, it'll be less campaigning if you were only in your district instead of running. I mean, the, the days have passed that this county is small. But I would say you have to work twice as hard going from one end of the county to the other end of the county. And my thing of it is, I would like to come to one person and they really know District Two. They know what our concerns are and they can address them there, they can bring them back to the group. And if you can't be resolved, that person can tell us, this can't be, we would have a better messaging and understanding with each other, you know. So I'm saying is, I have nothing against the fact that we are, change is hard, change is uncomfortable. And I think it's time that we get like our neighbors. If I'm not mistaken, I think that, and I've even gone to the election board because I, I, you know, I hear you all, I've been here now maybe almost twenty years. I, I wasn't born here, but I've taken some of your concerns of, let's budget, the budget. I went to the election board saying, would this have any impact? Because I don't want us to do anything, but think about the voter. What happens? Two and Three, they go over there and ask somebody, who is this person? I don't even know them. But if you can silently work your area and get people in your particular district to vote for you and come to you with their concern, isn't that a better way for us to really run our government? So that's where I'm coming from. Now, if the people, and I'll be honest with you, no, I did not solicit this from the League of Women Voters. I did not submit it and everybody may come to me tomorrow, my phone may be ringing off the hook saying, what in the world are you doing? But I truly believe we have got to start educating people about their voting rights. You all do everything for us, but we need to show up for you as well too. Because, no offense, but if we as a county, for as many times you all have asked something for two thirty-one and you've asked for things for that bridge, if we all would get behind you and trust me, at this particular time, I would call on my sister League of Women Voters throughout Montgomery and get them to get their delegates and everybody else to help us get what we need as our fair share. Thank you.
I, I, sorry, I have to respond. When you have three individual districts, you effectively balkanize a small county. Because you now have someone who represents only the South, who doesn't care about what happens in the North and vice versa. As long as I'm here, that's not happening. I'm not allowing this county to be balkanized. And it is the job of the League of Women Voters to inform the voters. That's your job. And you do a good job at it, by the way. I don't think it's confusing to go to the polls and vote for five people, which is what we do. So balkanizing Calvert County is a bad idea. These folks up here, you know, they don't get along all the time, I can tell you that right now. And I don't get along with them, and they don't get along with me and vice versa with these guys as well. But the fact of the matter is, it would be so much worse if we balkanize the county. Just a, not a good idea. And I don't want to be like the other counties. And they're balkanized.
And we talked through that today, you're, you're absolutely right, it would be much easier campaigning if I just had to campaign in one little district. But, you know, and I hope that people don't feel like, just because I'm not from their district, they can't come to me. I think that anybody can come to any of us at any time with an issue and we will do our very best to help you. But, you know, so I hope that people don't think that they can't reach out just because, you know, one of us don't live in their district.
And if I may add, you know, a lot of times things will happen in Dunkirk and I would go to Commissioner Grasso and say, hey, what's going on up there? Same way with Commissioner Hart and Solomon's and vice versa. So we do converse on each other's districts.
For me, even though I'm the D three representative, my votes impact the whole county. And it, it's funny, I, I have a lot of people who come to me from my fellow commissioner's district. I just handled something today that was out of my district and, and, and we, excuse me, we talk to each other and let each other know what we're hearing from the community.
So John, what was the vote today?
It was more of a discussion than, than a vote. And I think you hear there's, there's a couple of different perspectives on the issue. Those who have no opposition to this being considered want the voters to have a say in, in whether or not it's adopted. If I recall correctly, it was three or four years ago that this issue, part of this issue, the election by district came up when a St. Mary's County delegate submitted a bill. And there was some feedback that came from the NAACP that said that would be detrimental to their efforts to have representation on the Board of County Commissioners because of how it broke up the population by district for those three seats. I don't know if that's still their position or if things might have changed that.
So, so are we talking about consensus? So the board is in consensus to send us a referendum?
Yes, our discussion, I think where we ended was asked our attorney to see what the pathway looked like to do a referendum.
Okay.
Because as I said, I, I don't have any issue with any of those items up there. I just want the people of Calvert County to decide, not the state legislature.
I, I tell you, I would like the staggering piece, as I mentioned in our meeting. I think it's very difficult for somebody to walk in and do this job cold. And if you had five newbies, say, you're not, you're not going to have a good board. Just plain and simple, no matter how good staff is, you're not going to have a good board because there's too much to learn. But I don't know where that line is. You know, we attempted that on my first board, we wanted to try to do that. And there was no support to do that. That is the one thing I do like that the Board of Ed does, that way you always have some type of continuity. But, and as we spoke earlier, you know, for me to get to witness how Dominion went during that whole process was very educational. Which now as we enter with potential data centers, things of that nature, me and Commissioner Hans went through COVID and that was extremely educational. I don't know how you could prep somebody for the Health Department basically saying, hey, we're going to shut it all down. And you're like, well, what about ambulance drivers? About nine-one-one dispatch? You know, the approach was very hostile back then and it was a whole lot of not knowing. So there was a lot of, I mean, just a lot of experience that you just couldn't teach. So, but I, I don't know how, where's the line? Because we're all elected at the same time, so does somebody, you know, I, so I, I'll support whatever, whatever the taxpayers want, want to do. But I, I do wish we were stacked.
So it's my consensus. Final request, I believe the board does not support this request. Am I mistaken?
No.
That concludes the presentation. No further questions, if there is anyone here, there is no one online. But if there's anyone here who would like to provide public comment, you're welcome to do so. The board has adopted Resolution eighty-nine intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. You're asked to not be uncivil, rude, vulgar, profane, otherwise disruptive to the conduct of the meeting. Speakers are asked to identify themselves and if speaking as an individual, you'd be allocated two minutes. Whereas the designated spokesperson for a group, you'd be allocated five. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak?
So that concludes it. You gentlemen have, want to say anything? No?
Appreciate your time and input so we have things to think about.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you all for inviting us here and look forward to working with you going forward.
Questions come up, don't hesitate to reach out, we'll do our best to answer them. I know that's not a problem for you.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn, a discussion on that motion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you everyone for coming out tonight.